Good morning. Here we are at the Marion County Board of Commissioners session, board session for Wednesday, June 24th, 2015, at Courthouse Square, 555 Court Street, Northeast Salem. And as like last week, we have standing room only, so welcome, everybody. And with tradition, we're going to start with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We've got a real full agenda today. We have nobody signed up for public comment at this time. So we'll go straight into the consent calendar and get that out of the way.
All right, Chair Cameron, I'd make a motion to approve our consent calendar this morning. On it, we have under Board of Commissioners approve a contract with CFM Strategic Communications to provide federal lobbying services for Marion County's legislative program, federal grants, and long-term economic development strategies for the North Saniam Canyon not to exceed $503,093.70 for five years. Community Service, approve a contract for services with Oregon State Fairgrounds in amount of $160,000 for the annual Marion County Fair through July 30th, 2018. District Attorney, approve an intergovernmental agreement with the State of Oregon Department of Justice in the amount of $4,200,000 for the Child Support Services Program. Health, approve Amendment Number Three with Public Partnerships LLC to provide fiscal intermediary services and to extend the term until June 30th, 2016, adding an additional $300,000. Approve Amendment Number One with Mid Valley Behavioral Care Network for the Health Department to provide rental assistance and supportive housing services, adding an additional $169,597. Approve an order reappointing Sierra Nelson and Mike Mann to the Health Advisory Board for terms ending February 1st, 2019. Juvenile, approve the contract for services with North Valley Medical Staff in the amount of $750,000 to provide nursing services for youth through June 30th, 2018. Approve Amendment Number Two to the intergovernmental agreement with State of Oregon, adding an additional $413,822 to provide funding for juvenile program through June 30th, 2017. Sheriff's Office, approve Amendment Number Four to the intergovernmental agreement with the City of Sublimity, adding an additional $157,932 to provide patrol services through June 30th, 2016. Approve Amendment Four to the intergovernmental agreement with the City of Jefferson, adding an additional $315,416 to provide patrol services through June 30th, 2016. Approve Amendment Number Three to the intergovernmental agreement with the City of Aurora, adding an additional $164,292 to provide patrol services through June 30th, 2016. Treasurer, approve a resolution authorizing a change fund in the amount of $60 for the State and Clinic Office of the Health Department, and approve a resolution authorizing a change fund in the amount of $300 for the Dog Services Division of Community Services.
It's a long consent agenda, so I'll second it. And any comments?
Nope.
Okay. I just wanted to make a comment about the three contracts under the Sheriff's Office and the Mayor of Sublimity the other day made a real positive comment about how great our sheriffs are. So I know that's a real good thing for those cities. So all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Our first action item today is Community Services. Consider the approval of an order to award Oregon Video Lottery Funds to board-designated grantees. Sarah is with us. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. For the record, I'm Sarah Cavassos, Management Analyst with Community Services. And I'm here to ask for approval of an order to allocate funds for the 1516 board-designated allocations. This coming year, Marion County will receive 1.6 million in Oregon Video Lottery revenue. The purpose of those funds is to support economic development activities in Marion County. Historically, we've used those funds for a few, a variety of purposes, including two grant programs. One that provides funding to local businesses to create private sector jobs. Another upcoming opportunity that we'll have open in a few weeks is the community project grants that supports projects that improve the livability of communities in Marion County. And then the board-designated allocations. The board has been doing those since the '08-'09 fiscal year. And the purpose of those allocations is to support entities within Marion County that promote traded sector agriculture and tourism, or small business development within Marion County. This year, we have three entities that we're recommending that we continue to fund. Those are SEDCORE, Travel Salem, and Grow EDC. SEDCORE is our region's provider that supports the manufacturing, tourism, and agricultural industry in our region, and specifically in Marion County. They work to recruit, retain, and grow those industries so that we have livable wage jobs throughout the rural communities, as well as in the primary communities of Salem-Kaiser. Travel Salem is our region tourism promoter. They promote Salem as well as the communities surrounding in Marion and Polk Counties. And then Grow EDC has been a contractor that we have funded through board-designated allocations since the '09-'010 fiscal year. And they work specifically with small businesses and entrepreneurs in the North Saniam Canyon region. So our office is recommending funding for each of those three entities again. SEDCORE at $175,000 in the coming fiscal year. Travel Salem at $100,000, and Grow EDC at $60,000. So with all of our programs, we'll continue to monitor their outcomes, their outputs, and how these investments are impacting the economy within the county. Is there questions on the allocations?
You have any questions, Commissioner?
No, I don't. Just comments. Just three organizations that we rely a lot for, trying to move the mission of Marion County in job creation and growth, and certainly support them and hope they're successful with these dollars. In fact, while I'm talking, I'd make the motion to approve the order that grants this.
I'll second the motion. Comments? My only comment is, I was just reading yesterday, I think Mr. Latimer forwarded me the most recent employment statistics. And one of the unique things in there was we had 700 new jobs, manufacturing jobs in Marion County in the month of May that were created. And I think SEDCORE is a big part of that. There was good employment growth all around. And I want to say, John, I can't remember the exact percentage, but it was like a 16% increase in manufacturing jobs, somewhere in there. So we have a motion on the table. And a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. Our second action item today is Finance. Consider approval of an order writing off an uncollectible accounts receivable balance of $4,124.85. And we're gonna have, I think, next, all five of them are gonna be Jeff, right? Welcome.
Thank you. Good morning, Commissioners. Jeff White, Chief Financial Officer for Marion County. It is Marion County's practice and policy to pursue collection on any accounts receivable we can, for as long as we can. On rare occasions, we actually cannot achieve a receipt or cannot forward to collection for different reasons. And when we do that, we bring those items to your attention and request an order to actually write off and remove an account from our receivables ledger. So the first item before you, Marion County, within its accounts receivable records, includes a particular invoice with a balance of $4,124.85, which has been outstanding since December of 2006. This invoice was for costs incurred by the county for weed abatement on a piece of property. Legal files indicate that in 2009, there was an agreement with the property owner that no further collection efforts would be made. Unfortunately, that note isn't really clear as to which action that was referring to. There were several actions against this property owner. After consulting with legal counsel, however, it appears that there is insufficient documentation to pursue further collection efforts on this particular invoice. Public Works has requested that this accounts receivable balance be written off and removed from Marion County's outstanding receivables balance. There's an attached board order for action by the board to complete that write-off of this account. And at this point, Finance would support that request to write off this balance.
Okay. Any questions, comments?
Comments? All right, it's a bit of a mess of documentation. I hope that isn't a common thing. Contacts have been made with this person recently, or is that part of the dispute? And he says, "What are you charging me for?" Or that's taken care of, anything like that?
There hasn't been any recent contact at the time. The legal files indicate that there was multiple contacts made. And to that final note, there's a ledger of all the contacts that were made with that final note indicating that there'd be no further collection efforts. It's kind of set in limbo for a while, and at this point, we're going back and trying to clean up.
It's six years old. He probably might not collect it anyway. All right, I'd make a motion that we approve the order that writes off that account.
I'll second the motion and comment, and thank you, Jeff, for the update on Monday on these, that there has been some things put in place that'll help us with the details of these in the future. So we appreciate that. So all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 I'm not blaming you, Jeff. It's just...
No, I understand. And I guess for the viewing public, we handle hundreds and thousands of accounts, and our records are in pretty good shape. This one, and unfortunately, there's another one following. So it would appear by having two of them on the same docket that there's some issues. But they're really rare that we come across this kind of documentation issue.
Okay. The next item, as you are entering into that, consider approval of an order writing off an uncollectible accounts receivable balance of $50,000.
Yes, and this amount is much more significant. In 2010, a cable franchise was transferred from Country Cable, whose new parent company is NC Ventures. And that franchise was transferred to WAVE Broadband to provide cable services to county residents. At the time, Country Cable was delinquent in the payment of franchise fees that were owed to Marion County. The new franchisee, WAVE Broadband, was not responsible for those delinquent franchise fees. Marion County worked with NC Ventures and sought to collect the delinquent franchise fees and tentatively reached an agreement of a $50,000 settlement. A draft agreement was prepared at the time, and to that effect, unfortunately, NC Ventures never executed the agreement. After consultation with legal counsel with no written agreement for NC Ventures to pay the $50,000 to Marion County, and with the statute of limitations for enforcing an oral agreement having expired, Marion County Public Works Department has requested to write off the outstanding balance of NC Ventures of $50,000 as uncollectible and unenforceable. There's a board order attached for your review and approval.
Want to just do it?
Sure.
Any more comments? We've already made them.
Well, you make a comment. At the time, we should have tried to secure something. I assume there's no assets in a corporation that hasn't been in operation for a number of years, so we would be pursuing nothing. And then, of course, statute of limitations here in this case, too. So I'd make a motion that we adopt the order that adjusts the accounts receivable balance for NC Ventures by $50,000.
I'll second the motion. Comment, just that we were told, I believe, on Monday that WAVE Broadband has been very good about paying their franchise fees since then.
Yes, the new provider has kept up with their agreements with Marion County.
Yeah, so it's good. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion pass, passes. Okay. And the next item on your list right now, Jeff, consider approval of three new policies on the administrative of federal awards, and I believe Debbie's gonna join you. Welcome.
Not only is Debbie going to join us and introduce herself, she's going to handle this item.
All right.
Good morning, Commissioners. Debbie Gregg, Grants Compliance Analyst. As you know, the federal government issued some new federal guidelines concerning grant awards in December 2014. And in order to comply with those new guidelines, we have drafted three new policies that are for your review today. The first policy has to do with general administration and definitions of federal awards. The second policy has to do with allowable costs, and how we determine which costs are allowable for each various federal award. And then the third policy has to do with subrecipient monitoring. So we've defined those organizations that we pass federal funds on to subcontract with, basically, on whether those organizations are defined as a contractor or a subrecipient. That's important because there are additional monitoring responsibilities if those organizations are defined as subrecipients. And so we've defined those additional responsibilities in this policy as well. What you have before you today is a redlined version. We've made some formatting changes to the version you saw a couple of weeks ago. One of the more significant changes that we did address was we had some questions over the conflict of interest policy. And so we've had legal review of that policy. We've incorporated their feedback. And so we feel that now this policy states that a county employee that is involved in the pre-award process, so basically the grant writing, the grant submission, the grant application, there will be no conflict of interest if they participate in the pre-award process and also administer the federal award. I also wanted to note that Commissioner Carlson did forward some information to us last week that we reviewed, and we feel that it'll fit nicely in some procedures that we plan on drafting to accompany these policies. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Well, I'd just say welcome to the team. It's great to have you on board.
Thank you.
I can understand why Jeff wants to defer to you on these technicalities and details. So it's really a position that we needed, and thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Any comments, Commissioner?
Nope. I really don't. Clean things up. So Chair Cameron, I make a motion to approve the federal awards policies, Number Four, Thirty, Thirty-One, and Thirty-Two.
I'll second the motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. And then we'll come, we're gonna skip the next one until after our public hearing.
Any questions?
Thank you. We're gonna move on to the Health Department and consider approval of a lease agreement with Mission Investment Property LLC for temporary location of public health department personnel during the health services building renovation. And we have not Rod.
Not Rod. Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Roy Dede, Division Director for the Health Department.
Welcome.
Thank you. These leases in front of you are part of our health services building renovation plan that we are undertaking at 3180 Center Street. Our services need to move out prior for that remodeling to take effect, which will work on the windows, HVAC system, lighting, and some tenant improvements. This specific lease will house our public health employees, all services except for environmental health and vital statistics. An advantage we received from this lease is that the prior tenant left us a lot of clinic exam rooms, which are critical in the providing of public health services, so we don't have to do the additional remodeling. We already have the clinic spaces that we'll need. This is on Oak Street and roughly at 17th and Mission.
17th and Mission.
It's where the IRS building is.
Oh, okay.
And the Veterans Administration Clinic moved out on the first floor and part of the second floor, and we were lucky enough to find this space. Difficulty in getting these leases is that they're short-term leases, and the landlords are looking for long-term tenants. And Karen Galvin Price of the Finance was the lead negotiator, and she has helped us out tremendously in various leases.
So just a question. So the lease is for a year and a half, I just want to, right? We're going from June...
Yeah, it's for 16 months. The lease period's for 16 months. But the payments start in September. Our expectation is that we will finish completing the floor plan design with the landlord, allowing them to get city permits, and then finalizing some tenant improvements. So the expectation is that our public health personnel can move out in September.
Great. Thanks, Roy. Any questions, comments, Commissioner?
I just, maybe just for answering, Roy, when will this happen? When is the move gonna happen?
The expectation right now on the project teams for the county is September.
And then I've had some business in that building before. Seemed like I always had a little trouble finding it. Have you, how will people know where it is?
We have a communications team that has been working and developing flyers for all our sites, for our clients, our partners, payers. We'll be sending out county emails shortly, and with state agencies, we will be giving them, for the clients that come in over the next few months, we will be giving them reminders, handouts, and we'll also be contacting them via phone prior to the move.
Okay, now a related question. So there's transition time. How long will you be out of operation while you make this move?
The current plan is for the whole building to move out, with the second lease we talked about, in the month of September. And we will move it probably during the public health services on the first floor and the remaining public health services on the second floor. We expect to move out and be moved within a week. We will try, the plan is to keep services open transition as we move out, but we might shut down for a day or two.
Okay. I don't have any other questions, so if I could, I'd then make a motion that we approve the Mission Investment Property LLC 1978 lease agreement.
And I'll second the motion. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. And Roy, I believe you're up on the next one. Consider approval of another lease with McNary, excuse me, not another lease, a lease with McNary Square Partners for temporary relocation of adult behavioral.
Right. This is, we were unable to find a building as large as Center Street to house all our employees, so this was the best solution we could come up with. This is located down at Front Street, and this will house our adult behavioral health, administration, environmental health, vital statistics, personnel. Pretty much the same arrangement as I described prior. The plan is to move out in September, be able to get this lease going, and then landlord can get the city permits and go ahead and do some tenant improvements, carpet replacement, painting, and some minor TIs. And we would do the same thing relative to public health. The plan is to move out on a scheduled basis in September.
Okay. Thank you. Any comments?
No, I don't. I'd make a motion to approve the McNary Square Partners 1975 lease agreement.
I'll second the motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, and...
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you. We have one more for Health Department. Consider approval of an intergovernmental agreement with the Oregon Health Authority to administer the Foodborne Illness Prevention Program through June 30th, 17.
Good morning, Commissioners. What this is, it's the...
You just identify yourself for the...
I'm Rick Sherman, Supervisor of Environmental Health. What this is, is the intergovernmental contract that Marion County Environmental Health has with Oregon Health Authority to operate the Foodborne Illness and Food Program. It's approximately 13% of our license fees go to the state, and that's for two years. So it's approximately 50-some thousand per year that we pay them for the program.
I have a question. So this is for restaurant inspections that we're paying the state for. What do they do for us?
They provide us with technical service, or technical support if we need it. They provide us with many of the rulebooks, the signs, whatever else. And it's to run their program, and each county pays about 13% of their license fees to the state.
Okay. Thank you. Questions?
Nope. You asked the one I was wondering about. Chair Cameron, I'd make a motion we approve the OHA/IGA Number 148166 for financing of environmental health, Marion County Health Department Number 1973.
I'll second the motion. I don't have to declare a conflict because I don't have any restaurants in Marion County.
They're healthy.
I hope so.
All right.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thanks, Rick. Okay. Next on the agenda, Mr. Haley. We are considering, Public Works, consider approval of a public improvement contract for $1,384,866.80 with Knife River Corporation for resurfacing various roads throughout Marion County through August 31st, 2016. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Commissioner. Yes, this is our second package for this year.
Can you just introduce yourself for the record?
I do, don't I? Alan Haley, Director of Public Works. Thank you.
Thank you.
Again, this is our second package for the year for our resurfacing. This is twice what our first package was. And again, as you stated, it will run through August 31st of 2015. We did receive two other bids, but Knife River was the low bid for this project, which includes about 11 different segments of road, urban as well as rural. So the price actually is up a little bit for this package due to about six different segments we have in a more urban setting. But that's a real positive boost for the program. So I'm looking at having to go ahead and approve the contract with Knife River for the $1.384 million.
So you said 15 in the record, but it's through 16, right? August 31st, 16? So it goes from now until 16?
The guarantee goes through August 16.
Okay. The work's gonna be done?
By August of 15.
Okay.
Unless I read the contract wrong. No, you are correct, Commissioner. It's through August 31st, 2016.
As I said, that's quick. How many mi, do we have any idea how many miles this is for resurfacing?
Approximately seven miles.
Seven miles. Wow. Okay. Comments, questions, Commissioner?
Nope. I'd make a motion to approve the contract for $1,384,886.80 and 80 cents with Knife River Corporation.
I'll second the motion. All those in favor by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And motion passes. Alan, you're up again.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
We're doing seven miles for $1.4 million. I think what this shows is that, given the number of miles of roads in the county, the state really needs to be, to work hard on this bill that they're trying to work on for transportation funding. If not, we're gonna find our roads and bridges in terrible shape. And I'm really concerned about it. I know Alan is, too, because we don't have the funds to do the necessary maintenance of our roads that keeps them from having to be replaced, which is much more expensive. So the state and the federal government need to work on this transportation funding, which they seem not able to do.
We did get some positive news yesterday on the Fed side that their senators have marked up a bill. We'll see where that goes. Right. Where are we? Did we do a motion? Oh, okay. So we're moving on to...
See, I'm feeling like responding, and I'm not going to, but they gotta do something about that 324.2, and then things will fall in place.
That's the...
Clean air way.
Yeah.
Or contaminate your gasoline bill.
We are starting to get off track here up here, and I know as a gatekeeper, I'm gonna get us back on the track because I want to get through this. And it was only your comment that got me off track, John. Okay. Apology accepted. Okay, so we're on to item number 10. Consider approval of public improvement contract for $104,956.32 with Black Line Inc. for a... with Blackline Inc. for applying type-two slurry on county roads through September 4th, 2016. Alan, you're still there?
Yes, thank you again, Commissioner. Alan Haley, Public Works Director. This is our annual slurry seal contract, uh, we only had one bid this year with Blackline. This is a, a project where we put a seal coat down on, uh, mostly urban roads, um, all but one section of this contract is inside the UGB, uh, covering both, uh, the northeast Salem area and the southeast Salem area, uh, and there's one segment that's just outside the urban growth boundary, um, down on Kapler. So I'm, uh, this is an annual event, uh, roughly around a hundred thousand dollars a year, and just adds life to a, a, a local road section. So I'd ask your approval of the contract with, um, Blackline.
Uh, just one question, you'd comment, I know it's a small amount, and maybe the companies aren't interested in, but why only one bid, or is that the only provider in the area, what's going on there?
There's usually one other bidder, uh, I don't know why they didn't bid this year, um, but it's, um, it's either Blackline or, um, the other company that usually gets the bid, um, and frankly, mostly it's Blackline, but I don't know why they didn't bid.
Uh, just one question, um, for us novices, type-one versus, is there a, a type-two slurry versus a type-one or a type-three, or is there any...
You got me on that one.
Okay, good, great. So I'll just approve the contract. Now let's see if he gets a motion going.
Maybe we only want type-one.
Well, we have type-one and two of all kinds of Health Department things, I just thought maybe applied over in Public Works, too.
In spite of this lack of answer, I'm gonna make a motion to approve the contract for a hundred and four thousand nine hundred and fifty-six dollars and thirty-two cents with Blackline Incorporated.
For type-two slurry, and I'll second that motion.
Highlight that.
Okay. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, that motion passes. We're on to the third one, receive and consider appeal of hearings officer decision, um, case AR-15-003, SAD LLC Clerk's File Number 5659, and Joe Fenimore. Welcome, Joe.
Good morning Commissioners, for the record, Joe Fenimore. Um, this item before you is a request to place a dwelling on a nine-point-six-seven acre parcel in a farm temper zone on DeSantis Lane, just outside of Silver Creek Falls State Park. Um, the planning director issued a decision in March 2015 denying the request. That decision was appealed to the hearings officer who conducted a public hearing on March 31st, and issued a decision on May 18th denying the request. On June 2nd, the hearings officer's decision was appealed to the board. Um, one of the issues discussed by the hearings officer is the status of the property owner, which is SAD LLC. In the decision, finding seven and nine, beginning on page four of the order, the hearings officer discusses the ownership of the LLC and was unable to conclude that Penny Wilson had the authority to sign and file the application on behalf of the LLC. Hearings officer explains that an LLC is composed of individual members, and the only members identified are Anthony F. DeSantis and Sharon A. DeSantis, both of whom are deceased. Um, the hearings officer concludes that the proof of her authority to act is required in order for the, um, application to be reviewed. In finding thirteen on page nine, the hearings officer discusses the criterion that requires the property to have been acquired by the present owner and owned continuously since prior to January 1st, 1985. Once again, the status of the LLC needs to be provided in order to determine if that criterion is met. Finally, in finding nineteen, on page twelve of the order, the hearings officer discusses the big game habitat policy. That policy limits development density to no more than one dwelling per eighty acres in major habitat. The density can be doubled to one dwelling per forty acres if the dwellings are clustered within two hundred feet of each other. The policy does not state how to calculate the density, and the process has evolved over the years. Currently, the planning director calculates the density by centering a six-hundred-and-forty acre circle on the proposed home site and counts the number of houses inside the circle and in the habitat. Using that process, the current density was calculated at about one dwelling per thirty-four acres, which does not satisfy the policy. In the past, the board has examined several big game habitat cases on an individual basis to determine if there were ununique circumstances where the density could be calculated using a different method that would meet the policy. In 1998, Anthony and Susan DeSantis proposed a forest dwelling on this property in a conditional use case 9852. Um, at that time, the board found the subject property provided no unique circumstances to use an alternative method to calculate the density and upheld the hearings officer's denial. In this case, at the hearing, the applicant submitted four maps showing alternate study sites, um, and she summarized those on page fourteen of the order. Although the alternative study and maps were provided to the hearings officer, the applicant did not show by substantial evidence in the record why any of the alternative sites should be considered and would satisfy the criteria. Hearings officer concluded that the big game habitat policy was not met. In the appeal letter, the applicant did not submit any new information, but asked for an opportunity to do so at a public hearing before the board. Option for consideration are to accept the appeal or remand the matter back to the hearings officer. This would require the applicant to agree to extend the one hundred and fifty-day decision-making deadline, um, accept the appeal, and schedule a public hearing with a suggested hearing date of July 15th, 2015, um, deny the appeal, and uphold the hearings officer's decision denying the application. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you for, um, a brief summary of a very detailed, um, issue. Commissioner, you have some questions?
Well, they're not really questions, I'm, I'm in favor of having a public hearing and hoping new information can come to the board, but if, if it wasn't clear enough in Joe's statement, they're going to have to show in this hearing a clear and proven ownership record. I have to get that cleared up, and I assume that needs an attorney to go back and, and show clear titles, signatures of all the owners that those, uh, studies show or those titles show, and a template, and it sounds like this is the biggest obstacle, a template that, that would satisfy at least whatever discretion we have that wouldn't impact neither game animals in the area or, or really matter with the density. So there's some big questions, I wanna hold a public hearing, but I don't know that we'll be able to give them what they want. That's probably what my statement is, and I'm sorry if that fouls up the process, but those are the things I'm looking for, and I wanna make sure they bring to us. So after that, um...
Is there a question for him?
Go ahead.
If you, you have a question?
I was just gonna make a, a motion, we do set a public hearing for July 15th.
Go, go ahead and make your motion.
That is my motion.
Okay, and I'll second the motion. Uh, but I have a, a, a question, I guess, and we're in, um, we have a motion and a second, but Joe, what are, what are the, what's the new information that has been requested besides the status of the LLC?
More information on the, on the big game habitat policy, and we've had studies by a biologist before that, that the board has accepted and, and allowed the, the calculation made in a different manner because of where the habitat actually existed out there on the property. Um, we had another case where the property, the, the houses that were, that were, not meaning the density, were right at the edge of this, on the outside of the circle, and the biologist came in and did an eighty acre circle around all the existing houses and showed that, like, half the property could be developed, and, and the board accepted that as, as an option also at that time. So it's up to the applicant to bring us something for you to consider.
Okay, so, uh, a consultant biologist that would, would bring information, that would be new information that hasn't been brought forth?
Correct.
And then clearing up the ownership issue in a public hearing, those are the two things that would be, information that has not been brought forth, that if brought forth would be new information we could consider?
That is correct.
In making a decision.
And also at that time, if, if there was a lot of information that needed to be considered and you wanted a legal review, you could remand it to the hearings officer at that point, if you chose to do so.
Okay, we have a motion on the table, all those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
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 Thank you.
Motion passes, public hearing. Okay, we are going to, um, open a con, we're under contact review board and consider approval of order granting a special, class special procurement exemption to award multiple contracts for drug and alcohol prevention services. Camber, I saw you back there, and who's your guest with you today?
My name is Peter Davis, I'm the Program Supervisor for Rural and Prevention Services.
Peter, welcome.
Thank you.
And you'll need to introduce yourself to Camber.
My name is Camber Schlag, I'm the Contracts and Procurement Manager in Finance.
Okay.
Welcome.
So we are asking for a special class procurement exemptions for the Oregon Together Groups. The Oregon Together Groups, and there are five of them, are based on the communities at Care Model, and they're community groups that, um, work on prevention services for drug and alcohol. So their prevention, the Together Groups are in Salem, Jefferson, Staton, Woodburn, and Silverton, and what they do is they do drug and alcohol activities such as the Strengthening Families Program, um, they're working on the Moore Campaign, which is a, a norming campaign, a community norming campaign that gets teens to drink less, um, and they also put on youth development activities and substance abuse prevention, um, events as well. We have been contracting with the groups, with four of the five groups, for more than twenty-four years, so we have a long, um, relationship with them, and all of them go through a specialized training in order to be able to do the program, and so they are trained in prevention services. Thank you.
The Marion County Board of Commissioners acting as the Marion County Contract Review Board must authorize the use of a class special procurement process to award multiple contracts by an alternative method pursuant to ORS 279B.085. On June 16th, 2015, we issued a public notice for a special procurement which closed on 6/23/15 with no comments. As demonstrated in Exhibit A findings which you have attached up there, and pursuant to Marion County Public Contracting Rules Section 20-0285, contracting with multiple providers will not encourage favoritism or substantially diminish competition and will result in substantial time and cost savings to the county. We request the board find the use of a class special procurement to award, award multiple contracts for alcohol and drug prevention services is justified and consistent with the Marion County Public Contracting Rules, and allow the award for multiple contracts with the selected Oregon Together Providers through June 30th, 2017.
Okay. Any questions, comments?
No. The fact that we've been working with them and they're active in the communities, I, I know of them and their works, I'd make a motion that we, uh, approve the board order to grant a special procurement exemption awarding multiple drug and alcohol prevention service contracts.
And I'll second the motion. Um, again, this is under the Contract Review Board, so all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. And we'll close the Contract Review Board, and we're back here in time for public hearings, which were to begin at 9:30, and I apologize for being fifteen minutes late, for those of you that were waiting for public hearings. First public hearing we have is, um, what?
Let's roll them around a little bit if we can.
Do the Public Works.
Yeah, uh, like C, the Mill City one, I see people here for that, and, uh, White Wind, too.
Okay, so, so let's, uh, we're gonna move to, um, the third item under public hearings, item number C, um, public hearing to consider the City of Mill City Comprehensive Plan Amendments. Brandon, are you ready to go? Now I just switched around on you, the suggestion of my colleague.
Sure am. Good morning Commissioners, for the record, Brandon Reich, staff representing the Planning Division of Public Works. The City of Mill City has developed amendments to its Comprehensive Plan, and has submitted these to the county for the county's consideration and concurrence in the adoption of the Comprehensive Plan. On May 6th, 2015, the Board of Commissioners approved a resolution initiating the county's review of the amendments and scheduling a public hearing for today. Oregon revised statutes and Oregon administrative rules provide a means to coordinate a population forecast for a city, one of the components that was updated in the Comprehensive Plan. In order to determine a forecast for 2035, Mill City used a method that takes into account the city's split between Marion and Lynn Counties. By looking at the city's share of population in both counties and extending that forecast into the future year of 2035, the city determined a future population of 2,461 persons. This is consistent with the requirements in state law. The city is, Mill City is not proposing to expand its urban growth boundary at this time. The city determined there is enough land within its existing urban growth boundary to accommodate twenty years of residential and employment growth. Along with adopting the amendments to its Comprehensive Plan, the city is asking the county to concur in two additions to the UGB that previously took place in 2005. The first, the Runyon property, is point-eight-six acres of land that was added to the city in 2005 on the east side of the city in order that the city could provide the property a sewer because the septic system on the property failed. The property was included in the UGB at that time and annexed into the city limits. The second is the city's north water storage reservoir, a two-point-eight-four acre land brought into the UGB in the middle center north of the, of the city. It was annexed into the city in 2005 in order to, that this portion of the city's water system would be inside the city and zoned with a city urban zoning. The urban growth policies contained in the Urbanization Section of the Marion County Comprehensive Plan must also be reviewed against the proposed amendments to the Comprehensive Plan of the city. The city demonstrated that it is able to provide adequate residential, commercial, and industrial lands to meet the needs of the city for the next twenty years. The city also considered the impact of nearby natural areas on the city's growth and identified unique economic goals based on the city's resources and the city's desire for its future. The city's proposal is consistent with the urban growth policies and growth management framework in the Marion County Comprehensive Plan. Staff recommends that the board concur in the City of Mill City Comprehensive Plan Amendments and direct staff to prepare an ordinance approving the amendments to the Marion County Comprehensive Plan by adopting the amendments to the City of Mill City Comprehensive Plan, including a coordinated population for 2035 of 2,461, and concurring in the additions of the Runyon property and north water storage reservoir property to the urban growth boundary. With that, I'm available for any questions you may have.
If, excuse me, if, if you could, Brandon, just to go over again, so essentially these things, the Runyon property and the water, they essentially happened and, and, but yet concurrence wasn't obtained from Marion County at the time, this cleans that up?
That's correct.
They seem like the correct decision to, uh, have been done, it just didn't follow form, so I don't have any problem with that at all.
Um, Brandon, just a question, uh, you, you mentioned population of 2,461 by 2035, is today, are they about fourteen, a little over fourteen-hundred in Mill City?
I don't recall.
Maybe, Mr. Kenny?
Eighteen fifty-five is what I hear from the city's planner.
Sold.
Yeah.
Oh.
Okay.
So that's actually a fair amount of growth, that city is expecting some, some growth and the growth to continue.
Yeah, that's a thirty-three percent in twenty years, yeah. Well, with the economic development we're working on up there, it maybe happened sooner than that.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. So, uh, no further questions for staff, um, we'll go, um, into public, um, Mr. Kenny is here, David Kenny, if you wanna come up.
This way.
It's good, it's good to see you on that side, and you...
Thank you very much, Commissioner. Cameron, my name is David Kenny, um, I'm the Community Development Consultant, serve as the City of Mill City's Planning Consultant. Um, I'd also like to introduce that we have in the audience Ann Carey and Dennis Chamberlain, who are two members of the Mill City Planning Commission, and joined me this morning.
Good, good to have you here, thank you for your service.
Just wanted to express my appreciation to Brandon for coordination on the plan update. He worked with the city on looking at the population coordination forecast and also in trying to resolve a couple of those issues, which were UGB amendments that had been considered by the city in 2005, but as Commissioner Brentano mentioned, had not completed the process at the Marion County level. The plan update is the first major Comprehensive Plan update the City of Mill City has completed since 1980, so it's thirty-five years since the city did a major, um, review of its Comprehensive Plan. This is the first part of what is a two-part process, there'll be another few more chapters that get added during the next year or so. The Planning Commission has been working on the plan update for approximately a year in, in detail, going through every single component. This update includes a revision to the buildable lands inventory to the city, the population forecast, and chapters related to natural resources, demographics, um, and the economy. And I know the Commissioners have been involved in several meetings during the last three months up in the North Sandium Canyon area regarding economic development and... months up in the North Sandham Canyon area regarding economic development, and I appreciate your cooperation in that. And I'm available to answer any questions from the Commissioners or of any other members of the public.
Well, if I could, uh, it was already mentioned about the, you know, the population in 2035, so it begs the question to me, does this comprehensive plan update have sufficient inventory for a population that size, or, you understand my question?
Yes, when the city's, um, city limits were established and then the urban growth boundary was established in 1980, they incorporated a large area that extends west and includes both Ferris', Ferris' Mill and Frank Lumber Company at the west end of Lyons Mill City Drive. In between that is a large area of undeveloped land that is designated for residential development on the Lynn County side. In addition, on the Marion County side, there's not as much, um, available residential or commercial land just because of the limitations, because the hillside to the north and the slopes down to the river. But there is more than adequate, uh, land to handle both a population of 2,500 and probably more likely a population of 3,500 or 4,000.
Great. So, um, question, Dave, the, uh, the, um, infrastructure, uh, is that, there's land, is the infrastructure able to handle that growth?
The public facilities component is one of the chapters that has not been completed at this point.
Okay.
Um, the city updated its water system in 2005 and did a, um, added new wells and, um, pumping capacity and actually added that north reservoir that was constructed in 2005. The water system should be in good shape, other than updating minor lines throughout the city. The sanitary sewer system was constructed in 1994 under a grant from USDA Farmer's Home Administration. It was updated in 2010. Uh, the capacity of the system, though, has some limitations because, because of the water quality requirements from DEQ, there's no discharge of treated effluent into the North Sandham River. It requires the city to use, um, basically a glorified large septic system on the site, and that has some capacity limitations. Uh, the city will need to do a wastewater, um, facilities plan in the next five to 10 years to identify what improvements will be needed over the next 20 years.
Great. Thank you. Nobody else has signed up. We're gonna have staff come back up.
I don't have anything to add, but if you have any questions, I'm able to ans, I'll help, help answer them.
I wish I had one, 'cause you just sound so sure of yourself.
Well, I've got the city's planner here, so I'm feeling pretty confident.
All right. Chair Cameron, I have no further questions, and as I try to make a motion that we close the public hearing, concur in the city's amendment, direct staff to prepare an ordinance that approves the amendments to Marion County Comprehensive Plan by adopting the amendments to the Mill City, the City of Mill City Comprehensive Plan.
Okay. I'll second the motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Cameron. Commissioner Brentano.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brandon. Okay, we're gonna go, uh, jump, we're, we're going in reverse order. We're gonna go to, uh, B. Is there a public comment sheet, John, for, um, we're open, um, public hearing on, to consider a mass gathering case, MG 15-101, White Wind Productions LLC, Clerk's File 5697. Brandon?
Yes. Good morning, Commissioners. For the record, this is Brandon Reich, Public Works Planning Division. The item before you is the application of White Wind Productions LLC for a small mass gathering permit on exclusive farm use zone property in the 6,100 block of Mount Angel Road, excuse me, Mount Angel Highway Northeast. The properties are located on the east side of the highway approximately 1,000 feet north of its intersection with Pine Street. The properties contain a total of 47 acres. One of the properties, a 25 acre parcel, will only contain a walkway between the parking area and the event area. Surrounding properties to the north, east, and west consist of various sized parcels and farm use and zoned EFU. Land to the south is zoned acreage residential and developed with rural homes. The applicant is requesting to conduct the Canterbury Renaissance Fair as a mass gathering event. According to the information submitted with the application, sound amplification will be used and alcohol will be available. The event will take place on consecutive weekends in July the 18th and 19th, and July 25th and 26th. Estimated attendance is between 800 and 1,000 people per day. Based on this information, the proposed event meets the definition of a small gathering. The mass gathering ordinance requires the applicant to coordinate with various governmental agencies to ensure there are adequate facilities and services available. The agencies include Marion County Public Works, the Sheriff, Environmental Health, Risk Management, and the local fire district, which in this case is Silverton Fire. Each of these agencies was provided with a copy of the request and given an opportunity to comment. All of the Marion County agencies responded that the event has been conducted for a number of years in the past with no problems, and the conditions from previous years should be carried forward. The Silverton Fire District also noted no problems and once again requested that the applicant allow it to inspect the property prior to the event. The applicant states that sound amplification will be used during the jousting event for approximately one hour at noon and again at 4:00 PM each day. The fair is scheduled to last from 10:00 AM until 6:00 PM. Today, the Board has the options to consider to continue the public hearing, to close the public hearing and leave the record open, or to close the public hearing and approve, deny, or modify the proposal. Staff recommends the Board approve the request subject to the recommended conditions of approval. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Brandon, this is an annual event, isn't it?
Correct. I think this is the third year.
Seventh.
Seventh year, sorry.
I think this was the first, um, time I got to do this was last year, about the same time when I first got here, so. We did this last year.
Mm-hmm. We did.
Any questions?
Well, I'm just looking, Brandon, for the, what the conditions really are, they're scattered out. Could you highlight those for me?
Mm-hmm. Let's see.
I thought you were looking for your jousting.
In your packet, should be in your packet, page, um, seven, at the end, recommended conditions of approval. And I've got a copy here if you need that.
I just saw one, it made me look for it, Brandon, but it was like, it said the Board may, uh, make a condition to follow Marion County noise. Is that contained in these conditions, or was that outside of the specific ones?
I believe we don't need to have a specific condition for that because of the, uh, the amplification, the times of amplification don't violate the, or are consistent with the county ordinance.
It does say it on, uh, page 8F, restricted hours of operation when sound amplification is used. Shall not conduct within 1,000 feet between the hours of, so there's something in there about sound. All right.
And we, we don't have the additional step to look at a variance for that because they're doing the amplification actually even earlier than that, noon and four.
Okay. You wanna make a motion?
Well, that's...
Oh, yeah, sorry. We, we have, uh, public testimony from, I believe it's, is it Mary White?
Nancy.
Nancy White. Yes.
I'm Nancy White. I am the promoter of this particular fair. I've been owner and chief cook and bottle washer the whole time. Um, we, what we're offering is a historical, kind of a living village kind of thing. It's set in the 1500s. It's, uh, um, English marketplace. We have the joust, of course, which is one hour show, twice a day at 12 and 4, and of course the Royal Court. Oh, we have the lovely Queen. Uh, we have period demonstrations, merchant vendors, food, the alyard is a vendor, I do not manage that at all. And he is experienced in other shows as well. Uh, we all dress in period garb and we have a blast.
I, I think it's been a popular and, and growing, and, and is it growing, or?
It is growing, but we're still a small gathering, but that's okay because we're actually growing out of our current site.
Right.
So, I gotta find another one. Actually, I do have another one in mind, but, uh, yeah, I'm not gonna go there yet. But anyway, yes, we are growing out of our current site and, uh, um, it is growing.
Oh, good. Nancy, um, I was just asking the Commissioner, where do we go get our jousting costumes?
Is that a job?
Well, actually, I have several, I have several vendors who are, are offering garb. Also have a renter, so you can come in and rent your garb and be part of the game.
Wow.
Also...
Throw down the gauntlet.
Men in tights. Actually, that's, that's Hollywood.
We, we probably know, Commissioner Carlson's probably watching, she could be the judge and we could be...
I think the judge is your flat on your back when I'm riding past. What do you mean?
It is a good time. It's a lot of fun.
Sounds like.
And, and there's kids' games and something for everybody.
Very good. Thank you for coming, uh, thank you for promoting an event that, uh, does some economic development in the county for tourism and...
Yes.
And families, so thank you very much.
History. Chair Cameron, then I'd, I'd make a motion that we close the public, so I don't know if, Brandon, do you have anything else? Excuse me?
I don't. No, thank you.
All right, the close the public hearing, close the record, approve the mass gathering permit, subject to the conditions listed.
Okay, I'll second that motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
Greetings, my lords.
Thank you.
I think she was referring to you as a lord.
Probably.
Right. Okay. We gather ourselves here and get to the last, um, important item on our agenda today is under the Finance, public hearing will open a public hearing to consider the approval of a resolution to adopt a fourth supplemental budget for the fiscal year 2014-15. I don't believe... Nobody's signed up for this, um, exciting presentation. It's unusual that nobody signed up to hear you two gentlemen.
Thank you, Commissioners. Jeff White, Chief Financial Officer, and that is all I'm gonna say today.
Yeah, well, I'll also say good morning, and I'm Rich Meinecker from Finance Department. And I am here to present the fourth supplemental budget request for the Marion County 2014-15 budget. Oregon revised statutes require that increases to appropriation authority from the original adopted budget must be adopted by the governing body. In addition, any changes to the original adopted budget for expenditures that exceed 10% for each fund must be published in a local newspaper, and a public hearing must be held to allow for public input on the proposed changes to the budget. Public notice of this supplemental budget was published in the State's Journal Newspaper in accordance with statutory requirements. Details of the fourth supplemental budget were reviewed with the Board of Commissioners at Management Update on June 15th. This supplemental budget increases the total budget by $4.8 million to $378.4 million. I will review budget change highlights and state amounts to the nearest $1,000. The general fund budget will increase $532,000, which is a net of small changes in two departments and larger changes in the non-departmental part of the fund. The general fund non-departmental budget has intergovernmental federal revenue increase of $404,000 as a result of unanticipated Secure Rural Schools Title I forestry revenue. Contingency is reduced $34,000. $187,000 is allocated to transfers out. One, $80,000 to the county fair fund. Two, $5,000 to the sheriff's grant fund. And three, $103,000 to the capital improvement projects fund. The Secure Rural Schools revenue of $404,000 is allocated entirely to ending fund balance. The capital improvement projects fund budget will increase $352,000. Increased resources and their allocations are, one, charges for services for employer ad entry program, or EAIPE, $140,000 reimbursement from the self-insurance fund, which is allocated to health building elevator upgrades, $129,000, and the balance to ergonomic upgrades to the health methadone clinic. Two, general fund transfers totaling $102,000, primarily for $74,000 information technology purchase of software. $20,000 for purchase of a tractor for juvenile, and $6,000 for remodel of the victim assistance program waiting room at the courthouse. And three, other fund transfers totaling $110,000 are comprised of a $4,000 transfer from the traffic safety team fund for a Channel 3 repeater tower project, and a $106,000 transfer from the courthouse square redevelopment fund that is allocated to ending fund balance. The county fair fund budget will increase $111,000. A $31,000 increase for charges for services, interest, and other revenues reflects revised estimates of revenue from fair activities. General fund transfers of $80,000 will be allocated to materials and services. These funds will be expended on fairgrounds paving. In exchange for the paving, the county fair will be given multiple year reduction in annual rent by the Oregon State Fair and Exposition Center. Contracted services increases $84,000 for consulting services, fair entertainers, advertising, and fair events and activities. Contingency is reduced $18,000 to help cover expenditure increases. The criminal justice assessment fund budget will increase $115,000 as the fines and forfeiture's revenue estimate has been revised. Contingency is decreased by $269,000 as revenue allocated there is now ready to be distributed to county departments. The additional revenue combined with the reduction in contingency allows a $363,000 transfer out to the sheriff's office general fund jail operations and community corrections fund parole and probation activities, and the juvenile department grants fund for juvenile accountability risk reduction activities. The health fund budget will increase $1,689,000. Revenue increases in four categories, with the largest being 929,000 intergovernmental local from the Mid Valley Behavior Care Network. Personnel services is allocated $46,000 for additional staff hired very recently. Materials and services is increased $452,000 for pass-through funding for developmental disabilities program activities. Capital outlay is increased $180,000 for renovations at the New Beverly Avenue lease facility. Contingency and ending fund balance are allocated $111,000 in total. The juvenile grants fund budget will increase $259,000 to record additional federal, state, and local donation revenue, and $128,000 transfer in from the criminal justice assessment fund. Materials and services contracted services increase a total of $115,000 for youth villages services and Pay for Success services. The remaining $144,000 is allocated to contingency. The lottery and economic development fund budget will increase $50,000 based on actual state revenue and revise estimates for interest and settlement revenues. These are all in the lottery distribution program. Contingency is reduced $40,000. The resultant $90,000 available for allocation is budgeted in materials and services contracted services for community project grant awards. The non-departmental grants fund budget will increase $289,000. Secure Rural Schools Title II National Forest and ONC Lands Forestry Funds of $163,000 will be distributed to two resource advisory committees who recommend... will be distributed to two resource advisory committees who recommend use of the funds for special projects for the protection, restoration, and enhancement of fish and wildlife habitats and other resource objectives on federal land. There is also on $126,000 additional Secure Rural Schools Title III funds, which will carry forward for sheriff's office search and rescue services in future years. The public works fund budget will increase $842,000 with receipt of intergovernmental federal revenue for additional Secure Rural Schools Title I funds, which will carry forward for road projects next fiscal year. The self-insurance fund budget will increase $66,000 from an increase in estimated EAIP reimbursements. These funds are allocated to materials and services for EAIP safety incentive projects. The $140,000 previously discussed as an EAIP reimbursement to the capital improvement projects fund is already budgeted in a safety incentive projects account. Contingency is reduced by $600,000 and reallocated to insurance liability claims to cover current claims. Are there any questions?
Mr. Latimer is the chief budget officer. Do you have any comments or questions on this supplemental? You won't distract me.
Only that Rich has done a great job with this, and it's really important that we go through the supplemental budgets so people can understand how we're changing the budget from the adopted budget. And some of them are minor, but some of them are fairly large, like in the health department. I think it's a, it's a good supplemental and we need to approve it.
Thank you. Likewise, extremely good work. In fact, I was commenting to Jeff in the elevator today about how annual budgets just seem to be, there's so much work that goes into them, and Jeff says, yeah, but it's worth it versus a two-year budget being right on top of it all the time, so.
And then you make your adjustments quarterly in this procedure.
Right.
So, I don't have any questions. I don't know when to spoke or signed up to speak on it, so Chair Cameron, if I could, I'd make a motion to close the hearing, adopt the proposed supplemental budget, and request appropriation authority.
I'll second the motion, and all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you, gentlemen, for your fine, detailed work that I would never be able to handle.
Thank you, commissioners.
We are going to read our calendar, I believe, right? We got through this in.
Well, I would like to discuss a little bit off the agenda, it's not a, I don't think it's a problem, but having to do with water. We're obviously getting into continued, what's the right word? For example, the weather this morning is talking about 90 degrees through February 4th, or July 4th, I hope it's not February. We know about what's going on in Detroit. We're hearing things about St. Paul. I want to be totally as responsive as we can be, and maybe if I could, just ask Glory to talk about, I'm even not clear what our roles are in, like St. Paul in particular problems. I do know about declarations. Well, we've had this discussion, but maybe it isn't for public. Could we take a minute and just go over it again for the public, where we are, what we're thinking? Since we talked, I might add Sherman County's been added to the list, and the drought thing's getting closer and closer.
Mr. Chair Commissioners, emergency declarations for drought conditions and water gives the state certain authority to reallocate water. That's the primary purpose. It's unlike other emergencies because you can't bring necessarily resources and infrastructure to create more water. That depends upon the nature of the emergency. If you had a system shutdown, perhaps trucking in some water, some short-term emergency mutual aid type assistance could be called upon, but the drought declaration is really about the allocation of water to make sure municipal and other important industrial economic uses receive priority for water. It sometimes means irrigation is lower in priority than junior water rights, the one with recent water rights get shut off sooner than it might have in past years. So, we can look at the very specifics. It could be by region, not the whole county. It could be the Detroit area, it could be the St. Paul area. Look at really what the parameters are. We've heard Salem municipal water supply should be fine in terms of not reaching drought conditions impacting the municipal water supplies, but it's really depends upon the specifics.
Let me talk about a community, listen, I'm sorry I'm using St. Paul, but I'm a little worried about him. Would they make their own declaration and then for their community, perhaps find a way to transfer water, water rights, et cetera, for their use, or is that a role for the county?
They don't have the authority to change water rights and allocations. That's a state. They could declare an emergency, they could ask then the county to declare an emergency, and the county could ask the state, so perhaps, yes.
But that would be the path to get relief then?
Correct.
I don't know, we're gonna run into these things this summer, I'm afraid.
I got it.
Thank you.
I got it. Yeah. So, I was just trying to get ahold of the message we got in the middle here. I got an email, county email, from somebody that said that there's a concern about the St. Paul water system. We don't know what that is yet. We're gonna get filled in on it, but we did have this management update on Monday with the Army Corps there, and our Ed Flick from Emergency Management, and was really good, and Gloria, I appreciate that background. And I'm personally hypersensitive to this because I spent a lot of time up in Detroit. I have a second home up there, and I've seen the economic impact already to the two marinas, plus other businesses that are affected by that. And in that, two weeks ago, I said to my wife, we're on a well, and it's a, it's not as deep as other people's well, and I said, I'm concerned about our water system. And just yesterday, when I had the sprinklers go on to try to repair them, pop, I hit dry. So, it's really hypersensitive to me, and we heard in that meeting that they'd only have two wells reported, that they're, I guess, dry in the county, but when I called my guy, I won't mention his business name in, on the public record, but over in Silverton, who's handled all my water treatment.
I could probably tell you a name, then, but go ahead.
Starts with a, starts with an S, right? He's a great guy, and I called him on his cell phone because I wanted to make sure I was doing the right things, and he says, I am getting calls, he says, I'm running ragged, getting calls every day of people on wells that are running low or dry, and I'm having to go in and put water storage systems into them. So, it's bigger than I think we got notice of the other day. It'd be interesting to get some people like him talking about it, involved in our conversation, and what can and cannot be done, and to hear what's going on in St. Paul, but the water tables are gonna go down, and.
And this is still June.
And we asked, I think we asked Ed yesterday or Monday for a monthly update with the Army Corps, but we may want to do, have some sort of a weekly progress because it is, especially after this 100-degree week we're gonna have, they're gonna see more, more and more systems. And sustaining 1,000 cubic feet per second indefinitely.
You didn't buy that.
I didn't buy that.
For the public's benefit, the statement was made that the Corps could indefinitely provide 1,000 cubic feet per second coming out of Detroit's system, and Mr. Cameron doesn't.
And there's 500 and, I think, 60 feet going in as of last Friday, and I'm sure that's down today, and it's gonna go down more and more. So, let's go into some meeting dates, right?
Fine.
We'll keep the public posted on what we learn about the drought and do the best we can. Gloria, thanks for the update. We're here, and then later today, we have a 2:30 taping at CCTV, Marion County Today TV show. Kind of watched you the other day on that. You looked pretty good. I'm gonna have to learn something. So, to Commissioner Carlson.
Makeup.
It's the makeup, okay. And then also later today, farewell to the Salem Chambers, Jason Brant, who we will miss. We'll still see him around statewide, though. He's gonna be up in Wilsonville, thinks still live here. And then 8:30, and that is, excuse me, that's at the Chamber on Commercial Street Northeast. 8:30 Friday, the 26th, Insight Board Walamette Jobs Council Meeting at Shemecada Center for Business and Industry, Insight Boardroom 626 High Street Northeast, Suite 305. Excuse me. On the 29th, Monday, from 8:30 to 9:00, we have a Board of Commissioners' calendar review up here in this building on the fifth floor. On Monday, the 29th, 9:00 to 11:00, a management update here in this building on the fifth floor. Tuesday, 6:30, the last day of June, from 4:00 to 7:00. This'll be fun. Bureau of Land Management Public Elected Officials Meeting. I'm looking forward to.
If I could interrupt you there, it's not on, and I want to know, make sure you know that you're welcome. In fact, it'd be nice if you could be, and I believe it's 1:00, is a meeting of the ONC Board in preparation for the meeting with public officials at 4:00.
I think, I think you said that to me, and I can't remember if I had a conflict. That's next, what was that date? That's the 30th?
Tuesday.
Tuesday. Yeah, maybe I can be there. We might add that to the schedule.
If we could.
We'll just announce it here, that'd be, and you're doing it right there at the BLM office?
No, it's at Phoenix Inn.
Oh, it's South Commercial. So, at 1:00, there is a ONC meeting at the Phoenix Inn on South Commercial on Tuesday, the 30th.
I might be wrong on that time, but that's what I have in mind.
What, what is it? 1:00 to 3:30 at that location on ONC Timber Counties. So, then we go to the first day of July, Wednesday, from 9:00 to 1:00, we have a board session. We have 9:00 to 1:00, we, I've never been here till 1:00, so.
Be careful what you say.
Okay.
When you start worrying about dinner, you know you've had.
But the public that's listening can.
And you know what the septic was?
What?
Ground water. So, get ready.
Oh, great, well, okay, and then, it's probably out in my area, too. Again, on July 1st, 12:00 to 1:00, Marion County meeting with Woodburn up at Luis's Taqueria in 523 Front Street, and we are gonna have some good Mexican food.
In Woodburn.
In Woodburn. Yeah, good. Commissioner Carlson, get well, we're looking forward to seeing you. Anything else? Yeah. Happy birthday, a day late, or two days late now?
We missed yours on the 10th.
No, we got his birthday.
All the good people were there, John.
Yeah.
Anyway, I would like to apologize for my editorial comment about roads.
About what?
About roads. Without some help from the state and the feds, we're heading into some real tough times, and people don't understand how important farm-to-market roads for Marion County's economy, so.
You don't need to apologize, you know in my humor, I was just saying that you got me off track, because I was on, I was on a mission to get us out of here on time, before 1:00. So, thank you, we're good. Thanks, Joe and Mark, and the men in the back. We're adjourned.